Thank you. Okay, on the roll call, I believe all members are present along with Superintendent Mr. Boggs and Assistant Superintendent Blaine Conley and Recording Secretary Jessica McQuarleth. Upcoming board meetings, we've got August 21st Budget Workshop Administration Office at 7:00 PM, September 11th 2017 Regular Meeting, Mentone Elementary at 7:00 PM, October 9th 2017 Regular Meeting, Mentone at 7:00 PM, and November 13th 2017 Regular Meeting at Mentone Elementary at 7:00 also. Spotlight on the Valley.
Yes, thanks Todd. We have three new employees here tonight we'd like to welcome and hopefully you'll approve them here in just a little bit, but I think we'll start over here to my left with Brian Rayber. Brian is a new social studies teacher at the middle school and Brian, welcome. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'm originally from the Macy North Miami area. I graduated from there in 1995. I returned to college at IUK in 2012 to get my secondary ed degree, finished that in 2016, and then I promptly moved to North Carolina and taught there for a year. And I had moved back here about two and a half, three weeks ago to take the position at Valley Middle School. I'm happy to be back home.
Welcome to the Valley.
Thank you.
Are you working with seventh graders?
Seventh grade, social studies, yeah.
Okay, welcome. Glad you're here Brian.
Thank you, man.
Cheryl Huff. Cheryl is middle school.
Science.
Science teacher.
Science. I'm eighth grade science and seventh grade advanced science. I'm from Nappany, Indiana. I've always taught down around this area, Caston, North Miami, Winnemac, and glad to be at Valley. Hope to stay here for a long time.
Awesome. Good day. Thank you Cheryl. And Mr. Kindig, Nick Kindig. Nick is our new tennis coach this year, boys tennis coach. So how's it feel to be on the coaching side of things now Nick?
I'm excited. We have our first match tomorrow and I think we're ready, so we're ready to get out there.
Okay. Now you graduated from Bethel last year?
Yep, this spring.
What's your degree in?
Sports major.
Okay. Now what are you doing right now besides coaching tennis?
I'm just working part-time, place where my dad works, so.
Okay.
Still looking for something sports major related as I'm sure.
Well, welcome. Will they have you on the line? I think that's everybody. Okay.
Next, the Tippecanoe Valley Distinguished Alumni.
Yeah. As you know, each year about this time we recognize classic distinguished alumni and this year we have eight Valley grads that we'd like to recognize. Now these are people who, the definition is, have led a successful life while making substantial contributions to their chosen field of work or have provided outstanding service to their community, state, or country. We took nominations last spring, throughout the summer, I think we closed those in May the 1st. And these are the folks that were selected. You can see that there are six graduates from Tippecanoe Valley High School. Mike Biddle graduated in 1996, Craig Boyett in 1993, Jose Morado in 2009, Ashley Lindemeyer in 2004, Dan Tucker in 1991, and Theresa Trosky Wallace in 1978. And then in the past, we've called these legacy award recipients, but we decided just to call them all Tippecanoe Valley alumni since even though they graduated from a different high school, it's still part of the Valley District. Now we're going to recognize Wayne Cupwell this year. Graduated in 1958 from Beaverdam High School. And a fellow by the name of Rodney Williams that graduated from here at Mentone in 1972. We have a dinner planned to honor them at the middle school on September the 7th at 6:30. We have a real nice meal. The high school student council members serve food, cafeteria staff prepares a really nice meal. And then after the meal, I'll read an interview, interviews each one of these people. And we've asked each one of them to identify an educator or educators that may have an impact on them. And we ask those people to come as well. So educators usually will come up and talk a little bit too in that lesson. Pretty good. It's pretty touching sometimes. So that's coming up. The following day, September the 8th, is induction day. We get together early in the morning, we enjoy breakfast together. These, the inductees then spend some time with the students. They actually make six different presentations throughout the day, two groups of students. And I find that to be a very inspiring time because, you know, these are folks just a few years ago who said, "Well, these kids are sitting right now." And it's a real opportunity for them to see that, you know, if the opportunities are there, you can work hard and take advantage of what's available for you at Tippecanoe Valley High School. You can do anything you want to do. Jose Morado is working at ESPN right now. Ashley Lindemeyer is working for the FBI. So, you know, those are pretty high-profile jobs, but we have others here that are, you know, everybody's exceptional in their own way, lots of different ways. So those are a couple of fun days and we're really looking forward to it. Now if you would like to go to the dinner, we are selling tickets right now, I think through the 23rd, selling tickets to that dinner. We'd like to sell them ahead of time so we know how many people are coming. And we should be having a couple of very enjoyable days, couple of very inspiring days. I know our staff enjoys it too. It's good to see these young people again, be able to connect with them after they've been gone for a while. Okay?
Awesome. Any other? That's it. We'll go on items from the visitors. Do we have any from the visitors we'd like to add? We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Number one, approve the minutes on July 3rd 2017 Executive Session. Number two, approve the minutes on the July 6th 2017 Executive Session. Number three, approve the minutes on July 10th 2017 Regular Meeting and Executive Session. Number four, approve the minutes on the August 2nd 2017 Executive Session. Number five, approve the hiring of the following personnel. Doug Heinhold, PLTW Teacher, Tippecanoe Valley High School. Brian Rayber, Social Studies Teacher for the middle school. Cheryl Huff, Science Teacher for the middle school. Martha Ruiz, Custodian for the high school. Monica Pitt, Custodian for the high school. Anna Richardson, Cook at the high school. Cassandra Jackson, Instructional Assistant at the middle school. And Frank Cam, Bus Driver for the school corporation. Number six, approve the following extracurricular assignments. Nick Kindig, Boys Tennis Coach for the high school. Number seven, accept the resignation of the following personnel. Shayna Crispin, Instructional Assistant at Mentone Elementary. Brittany Sheets, Instructional Assistant, Mentone Elementary. Aaron Foster, Instructional Assistant, Mentone Elementary. And Martha Reed, Instructional Assistant at Mentone Elementary. Keisha Clark, Cook at Mentone Elementary. Lauren Allen, Instructional Assistant at the middle school. Courtney Eaton, Bus Driver for the school corporation. Chris Fuller, Studies, Social Studies Teacher for the middle school. Chris Fuller, Assistant Football Coach for the middle school. Chris Fuller, Seventh Grade Boys Basketball Coach for the middle school. Chris Fuller, again, Assistant Track Coach for the middle school. And the last one is Ethan Brumball, Football Coach for the middle school. Number eight, accept the retirement of the following personnel. Dawn Rowland, Secretary for the School Corporation Administration Office. Number nine, approve the 2017-18 Teaching Assignments. And number 10, approve the 2017-18 Extracurricular Assignments. Is there anything, fellas, that you want to pull out, talk about, or?
I made a motion to accept this. We had talked.
Okay. Stan makes a motion to accept as it's read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aaron seconds. All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
No? Pass. We'll go on to approval of claims and payrolls.
Okay. We have one pre-written claim listing this evening. It's dated July 31st 2017, the amount of $769,366.50. The other claim listing is dated August 14th 2017, in the amount of $458,834.99. We have two payrolls this evening. First is dated July 7th 2017, in the amount of $358,363.38. The second is dated July 21st 2017, in the amount of $336,941.96. Excuse me, $86.00. So I was going to submit these claims and payroll. Go ahead.
Do we have any questions on the claims and payroll? Do I have a motion to accept?
Make that motion, Todd.
Adam makes that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Brian seconds. All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Eyes out.
On to the financial report. Okay. You have the reconciled bank statement and monthly financial report of funds for the month of July 2017. In summary, our receipts and dispersments for July 2017 are, total receipts for all funds, $1,430,848.88. And total dispersments for all funds, $1,583,128.36.
Okay. On to whole business update on the Akron Elementary School project.
We have Derek Anderson from Skilman here with us tonight. Derek, welcome.
Hey, thank you.
What's going on Akron?
Well, we had a busy last two or three weeks and then safety push schools started. But things came together, not a hundred percent, but guys had school, we passed all our local inspections, state inspections. It was a big push to get it done, but the guys worked hard, worked Saturdays. Lot of help from the staff, Chrissy, her patience, and things kind of, they came together good enough for, well, because it could have come together. So I hear, as I said, we got the new additions turned over for the classrooms, cafeteria, kitchen area, got all the kitchen area. We're going to leave that floor out where the cafeteria is until Christmas break. There's a way that we do it, the locker room addition, that whole entryway ties together. It was a little difficult to face that. Trying to keep it dry, so every once in a while, you get a little water in there, so we didn't want to put that floor out. Safety with the gym. We left that out. We're still, we just started working on that locker room addition. It's bored the floor last Friday, so now they're starting the masonry. Should have another crew, bigger crew out there the rest of the week. Probably taking about two or three weeks to get it to go fine. And that way, that'll allow us to get that parking area in that spot. Right now it's just stone, so there's some overflow in there for teachers and staff to park there. So by end of October, that whole parking area should be paved and be able to utilize for the school and staff. We'll still take up some of it, but it'll be a lot less of our, and put a lot more for you guys to utilize in that space. Okay, we have Area A, I'll call it existing building that was left from all the demolition. We're just, we're working on that phase. We anticipate turning that part over, the first chunk, October, fall break. So that way, some more maneuvering will take place, more teachers will get into their new space. And we have another bank of classrooms and areas that we'll finish up in the Christmas break. So total project, right around Christmas break, we'll still have a few odds and ends working on punch lists and doing certain things as we get going. A couple other things to make you aware of that's out there that we're investigating and working on getting some pricing on is there's those two, I call them four restrooms, two smaller sections. That old, the piping in there is pretty old, tall galvanized pipe. So we're investigating a couple options for pricing, either converting that into a more bigger game restroom, getting rid of the four restrooms, and then replacing all that piping. So you have a new pipe in one area. So it'll be a little demolition, knock it down some walls, and then probably convert it into a more of an AEA accessible space as well. So that's one item that's out there. Another thing that just came up, we're going to start working on that detention pond area. We're going to start that towards the end of this week. Probably taking two or three weeks to get that recreated, top sloughed, and put the riprap, the big rocks down in there, the fabric. So that'll be going out here in the next few weeks. Playground, that's going to probably be towards the end of September. That'll be in conjunction with the parking areas and the detention pond. So our portion will be ready probably mid-September, then it'll take a couple of weeks for the new playground equipment to be installed. So we're looking, hopefully they get to use it before it gets too cold outside, but it'll be close. Last item we're looking at is there's some existing sidewalk on the south end that wasn't called for to be removed. So we're getting a couple pricing for, to get that replaced. We have pretty new concrete everywhere. It looks, we spent all this money, and then we got one section of old concrete last, and it's like, why didn't they fix that? So we're looking into that, get some quotes on that. We should have those here the next week or so. And that will get with Mr. Boggs, and you guys make a decision whether or not to do that. Like I said, a lot went on in the last few weeks. Guys are kind of getting back to Akron, getting the locker room. We're probably anticipating the gym floor, you know, you can see the picture, there's some pictures of the reception desk that Pike Lumber donated out to leave. Probably the nicest area I've ever seen. And I was late into the game, so I didn't know, and I'm walking in, and I'm like, holy cow, it's, you know, that was a lot of money. Then I come to find out that it was nice enough, generous enough to donate. So that was, that's real nice. You won't find one of those big schools. What else you got there? Oh, this typical classroom. See the smart, smart TV, touchscreen TV there, some marking boards on each end, furniture in all the classrooms. I think, I haven't heard, I presume the teachers are happy with what they have.
That's actually that classroom, Bethel Furniture.
Yeah, that's a, that's a fourth gr, that's a new classroom, but with a fourth grade having to take that until they get their new classroom. So we have the older furniture in there for them. There's some neighbor.
There's a little break area in the hallway. You guys see the yellow spots, the skylight, where it's natural light in there. Those are some coat hooks in the hallways for the kids to hang their coats on.
That's all the way to the cafeteria, right?
Yes.
And then we have some more down by the outside door where they're coming in from the buses too.
There's the kitchen. Pretty big, it's a good sized kitchen. There's cafeteria. You see the door up there on the top left, that's an operable wall that divides the cafeteria to the stage. There's also another one on the other side, so you can have that side open, it opens up to the gym. So we have multiple, we have a lot of flexibility in that space and how you guys want to use it. You can see on the far back, there's a temporary wall back there. That's where the new addition that we're working on starts, the locker room, main entryway, it'll be back there. So it helps Harvard best to us, everything's good, she was happy. There's some site concrete out back on the east end. That's your chiller, your transformers, and that fenced-in area, just closer to us, just through the dumpster enclosure. New parking area, we had to do some modifications there to kind of incorporate that tree, the mighty oak, so we didn't damage the root systems. So we kind of, architect came up with some revisions, talking with Mr. Boggs and the arborist that came out. Made some modifications. Hopefully, I think it goes well and the tree stays alive. And that's part of the locker room addition right there. So that's the main entryway, it's going to be the main entryway. That floor is all tore right now. Mason, the block walls are blown up around the perimeter.
This will be the area back here where the buses park, right Chrissy?
Yes.
And the children come and go through those doors.
We'll end up doing our staging in the morning and at night until they're away from.
Yeah, we've got a few more months of last thinking. You guys will be much part of the site work and then a little bit longer once we finish up the existing classrooms. We're still tracking, everything should be finished up by end of year. Any questions?
Do you guys build the playground equipment or someone else?
We'll get it ready, and I think there's an outside sperm.
So like the bedroom, it's all installed.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, there's soft surface there. They'll do that as well. So we'll get it boxed in, stoned down, ready for the playground equipment.
Awesome.
I think this week they're putting in basketball hoops though, out there, is what I was told last week. So we'll get some hoops out there. And the backstops for the home plate is, the baseball fields, on two end, two sides, were put up last week, so.
Can you get from the blacktop now to that grassy player and?
Mm-hmm. Well, it stops, you still have to walk, there's a little.
Little gravel.
Yeah, left, that they'll clean up and stuff.
The kids can get out there and play.
They can get out there.
Sounds like we're just in time with your members.
Yes.
That sounds awesome.
Yeah, it's been amazing, actually.
Great.
And I think down the road, we're going to start talking about dedication. I think we're looking, I thought we were going to wait till maybe sometime in the spring. Once we're done with the weather, we'll know a little bit, be ready for spring, ready right after. That's my thoughts, I would kind of schedule it up to you guys if you want to do it sometime.
We'll make sure we schedule it when we're done.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to.
If we can do it, we can finish.
Yep, finish Friday. All right. Thank you. You guys have a good rest of the evening. See you around.
Thanks.
Yep. See you.
Okay. On to approval of addition provisions to the school board policy.
If you remember, last month I brought several policies to you, some were new, some were revisions. There was one about teacher appreciation grants. That was an addition to school board policy. There was another one about parental history check policy, which was provisioned to our current policy. We also talked about a new policy that, about reporting user neglect to the Department of Child Services, how that was changed, a little law change there. So we've developed a policy for that. And there were a couple, we needed to change our non-resident student transfer policy and our school age childcare program, recent care standards policies, and we did that. We have those there in front of you. Any questions about any of those?
I made a motion that we approve the addition provisions to the school board policy.
Aaron makes that motion. Do I have a second? Stan seconds. All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Eyes out. Okay, any other? That's it. All right, on to new business.
Well, I've asked Mr. Cooper, who is our middle school athletic director, to come and present his idea about a request to have approved a co-ed middle school soccer program. So, Mr. Cooper.
Since we've added the high school program, we've worked really hard in the last couple of years with our RRC, the committee of other schools that we work with, to try to figure out a good, whether it's going to be spring or fall, or try to get a middle school soccer program going for different schools. Finally, after a couple of months ago, we came to a decision that spring would be the best time. Five of the schools then decided to contract with each other, with home and away games. You could possibly have 10 games, and it would be a six through eight co-ed middle school team. And if you notice the fat schedule, and basically the cost of the ounces of that was around $2000. And the budget for the middle school, we'd be able to take care of that portion, make sure we have all of the needs to start that program. Just doing a quick survey of students last week, again, just to make sure, interest-wise, there was over 35 kids that signed the list saying that they wanted to play and wanted to know when to start, and was eager to do that. I already wanted to start getting physicals over, so I thought that was pretty good. See it as a successful program if we do do it. And if you have any questions, questions, comment on our panels.
Corey, you said six through eight. I think I read somewhere the fifth graders can play as well.
Fifth grade can play if numbers are needed, just like we do in golf and wrestling. If you have spots available, we would, except for the graders do that. I know I was talking with some individuals that, I think from Polk County, so we have at least two teams that were basically playing over in Rochester and Polk County leagues. And so a lot of parents are pretty excited with the fact that we could have this program available for our students.
So what kind of numbers are you taking?
I outlined 20 uniforms and supplies for that. Talked to Mr. Vakas, he said we have a interest that we could arrange that people were in that necessary.
Because how many is on the team? I mean, how many play at a time? Eight?
Eleven will play at a time.
Eleven?
So we can work it out, we're game-wise, since it's on the way, I'm sure if we need to, we'll play more kids.
You said there were five conference schools?
Yes.
Well, what about the other, aren't there, how many are there, 10?
Yeah, the other, the other schools are trying to work out, they may have a team, but it may not be under their school, yours at this point, but they're working on trying to figure out how to get that to happen. You only have to have five teams have what we call a championship or a playoff type scenario, so they're going to meet that standard for the conference. So after a year, they would probably set that up.
Good deal. Yeah, let's go ahead.
Motion to go ahead and approve the co-ed middle school soccer program. I'll make that motion. Adam makes that motion. Do I have a second? Second. Aaron seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes out.
Yes.
All right. Thanks for putting in the time on that. I know that takes a lot of work to put that stuff together.
Well, it'll definitely help your program, Mark.
Yes, big time. All right, number two, approve DECO grant to robotics at Mentone and Akron Elementary Schools.
We were recently notified, the DECO Foundation awarded grant of $8,212 to robotics at Mentone and Akron Elementary Schools. Mr. Doms tells me that, and Mr. Doms was the one that wrote the grant application, that a portion of that grant funding is going to be used to fund a stipend for the newly established position of robotics sponsor at each elementary school. And the remainder of the funding will be split between the two schools to purchase equipment. So this is just another step toward getting robotics going in both elementary schools and strengthening our student initiatives.
Awesome. Motion to accept the DECO grant to robotics at Mentone Akron Elementary School. Aaron makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian seconds. All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Eyes out. On to number three.
Yeah, I want to give a ported update on student enrollment. We took enrollment figures the first day of school, which was a week ago today, and then enrollment figures again today. And the enrollment at Akron Elementary is 382 students, and that's up 26 students from where Mrs. Mills was last February, the official count. Mentone, our number's 431, that's down 16 from February. The middle school is 426, that's down 11 from the last February. And then the high school is 584, which is up 9 from last February. So if you put those numbers together, that's 1,823 students, and that is a gain of eight students from our official count last February. So very encouraged by that. We've seen some declining numbers in enrollment the last few years. Looks like we're back on the way in the right direction. So I think there's a lot of reasons for that, but one of the, standing right back there, Mr. Lee, he's done a great job of getting the good word out about what's going on here in Tippecanoe Valley, and I think he were getting to notice that. It's awesome. I did want to share with you also that we keep pretty close tabs on the number of non-resident transfer students, and we have this year 120 students coming to Tippecanoe Valley that live outside of our district. And I think that number says a lot for what we're doing here, that people recognize there are good things about Tippecanoe Valley, that all their kids are part of that. So 120 students, I believe that's the most we've had in the years that we've monitored.
Do you know how many transferred out? I mean, I know that's a little tougher to do.
It is. That's a number that we've really never been able to get a handle on. That's a number that we've really never been able to get a handle on, because some districts will share that information with you sometime. Uh, so, we get a pretty good idea of how many we have coming in, because there's an approval process, but it's real hard to get a handle on that, it's hard to get them out.
We try to call administrators, do to see where they went and if they moved. Guess it's a little blue.
Yeah, that, I have asked our, our folks that, uh, what they do, when people do move or when they leave, is try to find out why. And, uh, very, very seldom it's because they're not happy here. It's usually because maybe they're living with one parent here, and the other parent lives out of the district. Um, just a variety of, a lot of moving, people moving for employment, those are. So, that's where we are.
Good deal. Before we adjourn, we've got our student representatives with us tonight. We've got a new one, Bryce Madoff, and Cheyenne Oldfather. What's happening so far at the high school?
Well, we have lots of new things going on. We've got a new principal, Mr. Kreip. Um, from what I've heard so far and what I've experienced, Mr. Kreip is a wonderful person. Uh, he's very involved with the students, he's always visible in the hallways and, uh, in the classrooms, always asking about sports and stuff. So, he's a very, uh, involved guy. Um, and he also, something cool he does, he always plays musical intercoms for school stuff. It's kind of a relaxing, you know, time of the day.
Music instead of, no, but he plays music.
That's great. Um, also, we've got new computers, the Dell laptops that we've, uh, just got this year. Uh, they've been running a lot more smoothly than the Acer's, those were a mess, but, uh, these are a lot better, and all the students like our own stuff. So, uh, we've been using OneNote instead of like Chocoball and stuff. And those, it's on us, it's kind of confusing at first, but once you get the hang of it, it works a lot better for all the students. Um, also, seniors right now, we're all kind of scrambled because we're all getting scholarship opportunities and stuff, and searching for college and other plans for our future. So, it's kind of an exciting, yeah, scary time for all of us, but.
Yeah, the scholarships are due.
September first.
Yeah, they're early in the year.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're all trying to hurry and get those in. But, yep, so it's exciting, but scary. So, hand it over to Bryce.
Um, right now at the high school, we got, uh, quite a few sports going on, as of football, volleyball, girls golf, boys tennis, cross-country and soccer. Um, the volleyball scrimmage against Knox, we did good. And the football scrimmage against Warsaw, we did really good at that. Um, football has a game against Bremen Friday, that's away. And volleyball has a game against West Noble Thursday, which will be at home. Um, we, right now, we're doing math and English remediation for SRT and DS, which are helping kids with I-Step, um, and helping them work in those areas. And hopefully, um, retakes are in December and in May, and hopefully, we'll have kids pass and move on.
Awesome. Thanks, everybody. Thank you much. Awesome. Well, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned for this evening.
Thanks for coming.